Oh, sorry. There's one other thing. I believe Commissioner Thomas were working with her. I think maybe there was some confusion about online versus in person. So we'll give you an update on that as soon as we can.
Okay. All right. And my apologies. I do actually know how to count to five is like one hand. So we're good. But I just know that I had texted with Bernie and he knew place and time. So all right.
Jack, it'll take me 20 minutes to get there. That's why I was afraid of being late. So.
Okay. Sorry about that, Julie.
That's okay. I'll I'll feed Ollie and head in. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Did I understand correctly? She's on her way in to be the fifth. So that she said 20 minutes. Okay, folks, I would say we are going to be delayed at least 20 minutes. So if you would like to take this time, get up and go do something else, you're welcome to do that. But just be aware that it is now 6:03. So let's say that we will reconvene at 6:30. Is we acceptable? All right. Thank you.
Now it's on.
Now it's on.
There is nothing for the best, the biggest point.
Yeah. Just a way I know that's now. Actually, it's not. So yes, we like to do that. I was first there. Well, I'm great. It does not have any trouble. No, no. No, you don't have to be here. We have this. That was it. This is all. And I'm wondering. I think I have a big problem. It's like. Maybe a lot of it. I'm going to go for it. I'm just going to go for it. I'm going to go for it. You want me? That's what I'm going to do. First time. So. Yeah. I would. What do you think? Well.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is six thirty and we have our quorum present and the bell has just told. So we know that we are right on the half hour. I now call to order the November regular meeting of the Monroe County Plan Commission held this evening on Thursday, November seventeenth, due to adjustments in schedule from holiday and room availability. Ms. Nestor Jellin, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Margaret Clemens, Tron Enright Randolph.
Here.
Bernie Garitas.
Here.
Jeff McKim. Dee Owens.
Here.
Jerry Pittsford.
Here.
Julie Thomas.
Here.
Jeff Morris.
Here.
And then we have no representatives from the city, so we have six members present, five in person and a quorum.
Thank you, Jackie. Introduction of evidence, please.
I would like to introduce the following items into the evidence. The Monroe County zoning ordinance is adopted and amended. The Monroe County Comprehensive Plan is adopted and amended. The Monroe County Subdivision Control Ordinance is adopted and amended. The Monroe County Plan Commission Rules of Procedure is adopted and amended in the cases that were legally advertised and scheduled for a hearing on tonight's agenda.
Do I have a motion on the evidence?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will call the roll. Tron Enright Randolph.
Yes.
Bernie Garitas.
Yes.
Dee Owens.
Yes.
Jerry Pittsford.
Yes.
Julie Thomas.
Yes.
Jeff Morris.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on the agenda and is it, is it accurate as presented tonight?
It is accurate.
Move approval of the agenda.
A motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Bernie Garitas.
Yes.
Dee Owens.
Yes.
Jerry Pittsford.
Yes.
Julie Thomas.
Yes.
Jeff Morris.
Yes.
Tron Enright Randolph.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. With there being no minutes to approve, we will proceed on to administrative business. I see a public reminder for the CDO engagement opportunity, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Would you like to elaborate?
Sure, so we will be having during our next regular session of the Plan Commission on December thirteenth. The meeting is going to start at five thirty. We're going to put the public engagement session of the meeting in the beginning and the consultants for the CDO McBride, Dale Clarion will be here to give a short presentation and then we're hoping to have an interactive session for the public to go over the draft use table and the draft zoning map. So we hope that people can join us December thirteenth at five thirty in this room, the Nat U Hill Room, third floor of the courthouse.
Thank you, and I would like to remind the public that this document is an important document. This process is a protracted process that requires attention at several junctures along the way. This is one such example and we hope to have as much participation as possible so that we are not hearing about it after the fact, rather in the moment, so we can make adjustments and know what the community is thinking.
If, if I might, could you share the web link, please?
Yes, so the website monroe cdo.com is a great resource for anyone that wants to go ahead and get a head start on the draft zoning map is located on that webpage and then also we keep updates on the homepage of that website. So if you want to sign up for updates, there's a listserv that you can go to under public input. We encourage you to always check that website. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, with that bit of business covered, we are now moving on to the unfinished business of tonight's meeting and it looks like we have two items under unfinished business and then three under new business. So Tyree's, Tyree DeVries sliding scale subdivision preliminary plat right of way with waiver requested. This is a final hearing on petition SSS dash twenty-two dash eight and and.
Thank you. So since all Plan Commission members were present at the preliminary hearing, I'm going to go ahead and do a kind of just an update and not necessarily go through a full presentation if that's agreeable with everybody. Okay, so just as a clarification point, the official name of the sliding scale subdivision will be Bethel Lane Sliding Scale Subdivision Preliminary Plat. Okay, so at the last preliminary hearing, we had discussed conditions of approval. So this was a sliding scale to create one additional new lot. So the conditions of approval, we, we did have a good discussion about what the highway department would want from the subject being located. what the Highway Department would want from the septic being located within right-of-way and a portion of the house. So with this having a right-of-way with waiver requested, we came to agreement that the Highway Department would like to see the 40 feet of right-of-way that that was acceptable to be dedicated to the county. That would be a five-foot allowance to allow the existing structure to still be, that would normally encroach within the required 45 feet. It would also allow the existing septic system for the proposed Lot 1 to be within the proposed dedicated right-of-way with the condition that, with two conditions, that they supply a draft written agreement that was reviewed and approved by Monroe County Legal Department and that an alternative septic location is identified and approved by the Monroe County Health Department pending the eventual relocation of that septic system from the right-of-way. And so that's a stipulation of that written agreement. So both of these have been provided to us. We have a written agreement which is in your Exhibit 6. A discussion from the last preliminary hearing, which is, you know, why would a new septic location need to be identified? The Planning Director did have that conversation with the Health Department and it has a very informative email in Exhibit 5. They did go ahead and get that alternative septic location identified. And you can see that, let's see, this is just an update, so it's not actually in your packet. Let me go ahead and find this so I can share with you. Okay. So we did get this septic permit. It would use the existing septic tank. I did speak with the Health Department, Ryan Kasper Kushman. He had stated that the existing septic tank is located in between the house and the garage and they did approve a new location for a new septic field for when that existing septic either fails or has to be removed based on construction in the right-of-way for Bethel Lane.
And that would be the blue area that we see on that image here, correct?
Yes, that would be the new septic field. So that written commitment stipulates that if the septic system fails, it has to be relocated. If it's damaged because of right-of-way work, it has to be relocated all at the cost of the property owner and not at the expense of Monroe County. So legal has reviewed that and it has, you know, a good format. I think we still had a few questions to work out, but we have no hesitation about it. So that being said, the staff recommendation is approval of the right-of-way with waiver and the sliding scale subdivision preliminary plat with the following conditions of approval. That the written commitment is approved by Monroe County Legal Department and recorded with the Monroe County Recorder's Office. This written commitment would be to release Monroe County from any damage or harm to proposed Lot 1 existing septic that's located within the proposed dedicated 40 feet of right-of-way and that Lot 1 property owner would be responsible for and required to relocate a new septic system outside of the dedicated right-of-way should the system fail or be damaged. Two, an alternative septic location for proposed Lot 1 is approved by Monroe County Health Department and is identified on the preliminary plat. Three, a note is added to the plat that restricts any future development to the structures located within the front setback. And four, comply with the specifications outlined by the project, Highway Department Project Manager Ben Ayers within one year of final plating. This does require that proposed Lot 1 and Lot 2 remove the existing driveways and share a middle existing driveway entrance. That the driveways, that they remove the existing driveway instance to the east and the west, restore the side ditch to its natural state and bring the driveway entrance up to Highway Code of Chapter 755.
Wow, that was a lot, wasn't it? Thank you, Anne. Do we have any questions for staff? Tron?
Just one question and I guess with the recommendations, do you think we should remove the name of Ben Ayers and just stipulate the project manager? I guess I'm trying to state a question, but ultimately I feel we should remove the name so it's more defined by the position. I don't think Ben's going anywhere, but just that's my question. Just legal is if we make it subjected to Ben Ayers alone and he leaves employment with the county, it's probably best if we just identify it by job title.
Sure. I think we could all do that to say comply with the specifications outlined by the right-of-way activity permit.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry to be a stickler.
Right. Well, you know, Tron, that's, that's actually worth noting. So anytime we make reference to someone doing work, we should make reference to the position they hold. So thank you for that reminder, Tron. Are there any other questions for staff? And we will make note of that revision so that that recommendation can stand as it's written. All right, if there are no further questions for staff, I'm going to open the floor to petitioner. If there's anything that has not yet been covered, petitioner would like to present. Is there anyone here representing petition? No comment? Okay, thank you. If you're going to speak, you have to step up. If you're going to nod, you could nod from where you sit.
I just want to note that there are some, as Anne mentioned, there are some questions in the letter that as a citizen, I'm not equipped to answer. So before we can move forward getting it recorded with the county, we will need some assistance from Planning Commission or from planning staff.
Does that make sense, Anne?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Okay, so and you will be assisting him through the process?
Yep.
Okay, we got you. Got you covered. Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else from petitioner, I'm going to open the public comment phase one last time. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak in support of this petition, you may come forward now. There appears to be none. If there's anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition, you may come forward now. There appears to be none. With that noted, we will bring it back to the Plan Commission for Final Action.
I can make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, in the matter of case number SSS-22-8, this is the Bethel Lane Sliding Scale Subdivision Preliminary Platte Approval. This is the final hearing. I move that we approve the sliding scale subdivision, the wider, the right-of-way dedication with waiver based on the findings of fact and the recommendations outlined in the report verbatim as Anne listed with the changes to number two being, as I understand those. No, I'll get there. Yeah. Because there has been an approved septic site, alternative septic site on the site, correct? So number two should read an alternate septic location for proposed Lot 1 has been approved by the County Health Department and shall be shown on the preliminary plat. And then number four, change to comply with specifications outlined by the right-of-way activity report with, within one year of final plating. All else shall remain the same.
Okay, thank you Dee. We have a motion and a second on petition number SSS-22-8. This is a final hearing with, which includes a right-of-way with waiver and a sliding scale subdivision. Jackie, call her all.
I'm going to call a roll. I'm also going to repeat the conditions just so everyone knows what they're voting on. So this is a recommendation for approval on SSS-22-8 with a right-of-way dedication with waiver with the following conditions. One, a written commitment is approved by the Monroe County Legal Department and recorded with the Monroe County Recorder's Office. This written commitment would be to A, release Monroe County from any damage or harm to proposed Lot 1 existing septic that is located within the proposed dedicated 40 foot of right-of-way and that Lot 1 property owner would be responsible for and required to relocate a new septic system outside of the dedicated right-of-way should the system fail or be damaged. Two, an alternate septic location for proposed Lot 1 has been approved by the Monroe County Health Department and shall be noted on the preliminary plat. Three, a note is added to the plat that restricts any future development to the structures located within the front setback. Four, that the petitioner comply with specifications outlined by the right-of-way activity permit within one year of final plating, including A, proposed Lot 1 and 2 shall share the middle existing driveway entrance. B, remove existing driveway entrance to the east and west and restore side ditch to its natural state. C, existing driveway entrance be brought up to into and meet specifications of Chapter 755, Chapter 3.0 of the manual for construction within and adjacent to the Monroe County right-of-way. A vote in favor is a vote to approve the sliding scale subdivision waiver and the conditions. Dee Owens.
Yes.
Julie Thomas.
Yes.
Bernie Garitas.
Yes.
Jerry Pittsford.
Yes.
Jeff Morris.
Yes.
Tron Enright Randolph.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you, Jackie. That was a great summary. Appreciate that. A next item on the agenda has Tammy Bearman as the contact, but since I don't see her present, I'm going to take a stab in the dark and say Jackie's going to present this one.
Yes, I can go ahead and present this one. So this is a final hearing of this Chapter 803 text amendment. I'm going to go ahead and steal the screen over here and share the text amendment on the screen.
While you're doing that, Jackie, if you don't mind, I want to state publicly that we have spent quite a bit of time looking at this, most recently even at the Ordnance Review Committee, we looked at this. Some of this is a result of state and federal regulations and compliance that we need to be looking to, but also some of it is based on the best interest of homeowners and property owners in the county. So while on some, in some instances or in some circumstances, it may appear that these are overreaches of authority. They're really not always as simple as what they seem on paper. So, thank you. If you would, go ahead, Jackie.
Yeah, so I'll just go ahead and go through the text amendments that we're changing and as Jerry mentioned, there was a discussion at the Ordnance Review Committee regarding the second part of the changes that I will go go through. The first change proposed is under 803-2, which is non-conforming parcels and/or structures under subsection D, which just specifies that however, if the legal pre-existing non-conforming structure is within a special flood hazard area as specified in Chapter 808, then compliance with Chapter 808 applies. And that's for pre-existing non-conforming structures damaged by flood. If those are located in a special flood hazard area, we are legally required to make sure that they comply with Chapter 808, which is an ordinance that is given to us by the Department of Natural Resources so that we can maintain our flood insurance for the county. And then under I, we're going, we're proposing to strike the first part of the sentence, which is saying that for areas outside of the former city of Bloomington Planning and Zoning Jurisdictional Area, and we would like this subsection to apply to the entire county jurisdiction. Under that same subsection, number two, we are asking that if a non-conforming dwelling is mobile, a mobile or manufactured home, that it may be replaced by another manufactured home. And we are striking mobile and we are also striking without regard to the 25% increase in floor area. So what that's saying is that if you have a mobile home and it, you would like to expand it, that you would need to replace it by putting in a manufactured home, which is a home that was built after 1974 and has a stamp from the Housing and Urban Development organization. And so that's considered to be best practice and safer for people that are residing in those. So that's something that we're asking as part of this text amendment. Two exhibits for this text amendment included in the packet are Chapter 808 and it has highlighted portions that show the areas of that chapter that were voluntary from the state that we adopted. And then the other exhibit that we have is just a memo regarding the difference between a manufactured home and a mobile home. So if there are any questions or if you'd like me to go through either of those two exhibits, I'd be happy to do so.
I would like it if you, if you could just scroll up to the memo so that it's
Do you want the memo or Chapter 808 first?
It doesn't matter, whichever.
Okay, I'll go through Chapter 808 since it's first, just to show people that basically the highlighted text is already in the ordinance. The red, all caps text is
All right, there you go. We're tracking.
Yeah, the staff added just recommendations. And we did have a conversation about this at the Ordnance Review Committee. The language in here that is voluntary and possibly could be amended in the CDO is the discussion about only having permeable surfacing in the special flood hazard area instead of allowing like asphalt pavement or other impervious. But all the other discussions were that it's likely that DNR will require these voluntary suggestions as required suggestions under the new version that we will be getting sometime in the near future. So as you go through this exhibit, there are several highlighted portions that you can review. And again, these were given to us by the DNR and we were informed that they were voluntary at the time. However, we adopted the code as given because we felt that all of the language was helpful. So I will go down to the memo. There are not any other questions?
I want to make note too, while you're getting there, to bring that up, that Tammy Bearman is our flood compliance administrator?
Administrator, yes.
Okay, that's short for, short form. She's a flooding expert in the planning office. And she does an exceptional amount of work on this and is so knowledgeable that it is actually kind of scary, the encyclopedic knowledge she has of this. And she really makes sure that we stay within due bounds, which is very important if you like having your insurance rating unchanged in the county.
Yes. And if anyone has any questions about their properties or whether or not it's in the floodplain, we would be happy to talk with anyone that comes into our office or calls our office to give them that information. The other memo is regarding the mobile home versus manufactured home. And so one of the things that we wanted to discuss is that otherwise the mentioning in Chapter 803, if you look at our Chapter 802 use table, which is just for sites that are not pre-existing non-conforming, which is a majority of the county, we actually don't allow for new mobile homes placements to occur on properties. They have to be having that stamp from 1974 or later to be able to be located on an individual property and be considered a single-family dwelling. So the only location for a mobile home, which is before 1974, those can be located legally in a mobile home park, but we cannot locate those legally on a single-family residential structure or on a single-family residential site. And again, the purposes of that law is that there was a lot of damage to mobile homes, specifically wind damage, tornado damage. And so the homes that were built and constructed after 1974, HUD began certifying those stating that they, those were safer for people to reside in. So the purposes of it in our ordinance is to promote public health and safety for that.
So it only took, what, you know, a few generations to figure out that the structure of the mobile home was not going to withstand weather. And in case you're curious, I did actually raise the question as to whether or not pre-1974 homes could be like rehabbed with all the tiny housing craze going on right now. I was wondering, is there a movement of people, you know, maybe wanting to buy and rehab these, but they don't allow that. And it's not likely anybody would want to rehab a pre-1974 mobile home for any purpose whatsoever. Mobile home for any purpose whatsoever, uh, that I can see. Am I right?
We do not have many requests for that, no.
Right, right, right. So I think there is a use for them, but it's not legal and it tends to end in flames.
Um, my hands raised.
I'm sorry, Dee, I'm not used to looking for that in these meetings. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, I could not tell in the ordinance if there's anything that says you cannot move. A pre nineteen seventy-four mobile home from one lot to another. Is that in there and I missed it? Uh, just to make sure that we close all the loopholes.
Yeah, so Dee, if you have a, a pre-existing, pre nineteen seventy-four, so a mobile home located on a site. And you move that off of that site, you no longer have that pre-existing non-conforming status on that original site. And to locate it on a new site would require a building permit. Both the building and the planning department are unable to issue that because of the, these standards.
Got it. Thank you.
It could be placed in a mobile home park though.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you, where they would require strapping and the like.
It's a good question, but I believe so, yes.
Alright, I think we've covered everything under the, uh, amendment to the zoning ordinance. Are there any questions from? Members? No?
Couple of quick comments. Uh. I think that we've had multiple discussions on this and staff has done an excellent job on bringing information forth. You really have, uh. You know, we saw it at a plan commission meeting. I'm on the ORC, so we did CD the ORC. And then we saw it at the administrative session, is that correct? So my, my points of view on this are a public record and I'm not gonna rehash them here at all. I, I do think. The positives with this text amendment are we need to make sure that the. Sections of the ordinance mesh and are logical with other sections of the ordinance. Just like what we're trying to do is make our ordinance consistent with what the state puts out. We need to have our ordinance consistent with itself. So I think that, that, that's important and necessary. Uh, you know, I wasn't gonna use the term, but Jerry used the term overreach. You can, you can, you can put anything in there that you want. But we do have things in the ordinance that were add-ons recommended by the state. Or not, doesn't really matter to me because every, every, every location's different. And through the discussions that we've had, staff has indicated that we'll look at some of these, uh. Chapters or pardon me, some of these sections of eight oh eight, eight zero eight. As we go through the CDO, which, which is good, because there are some things that, as Jackie mentioned, with the impervious surfaces, it don't make sense. And I think some of these things that we get from the state, we just accept. And we, we don't fully know what, what they mean. That's not. Or a comment on prior staff or existing staff, it just is what it is. Uh, I think that there are portions of the ordinance that are subjective, that I think that we should work on. Uh. And then, again, I, I, I just think that we have to understand that different parts of our ordinance have to mesh. And we have to be consistent with the state in order to maintain our flood, flood control program. So I, I think all in all, it's a, it's a positive change. It needs some work. So that, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Bernie. Uh, Jackie, I'm assuming that the consultants will do some, uh. Continuity in the, uh, process of upbidding zoning ordinance. Call continuity to our attention where there are, we might have contradictory language.
Yes.
Okay, good. I would assume that's part of a standard procedure for them. Alright, if there are no other, uh, questions or comments. I'm gonna open the floor for public comment on the, the, these amendments to the. Uh, chapter eight oh three of the zoning ordinance. If you'd like to speak in favor of these, uh, changes, you may come forward. If you'd like to speak in opposition, you may come forward. Alright, and this is a final hearing, so we will entertain a motion on this item. Z O A dash twenty-two dash five.
And I don't see any commenters in the, uh, Zoom either, uh, panelists, just.
Thank you. Alright. We don't have a suggestion motion on this, so we just need a plain motion?
I'm ready to make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Tron.
And then I just think this was actually at the ORC twice before it made it here. We just got, we, we did discuss it quite lengthy. I'm on the ORC as well. Um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thomas, you, you seem like you were wanting to add something. It has been addressed. Okay, um. Case number, uh, Z O A dash twenty-two dash five amendment to the Monroe County zoning ordinance. Chapter eight oh three, pre-existing non-conforming uses. I, uh, moved. A favorable recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion for, uh, moving this on to the commissioners with the favorable recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a second from Dee.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to send a favorable recommendation for Z O A dash twenty-two dash five as proposed. Chapter eight oh three, pre-existing non-conforming uses chapter. Jerry Pittsburgh?
Yes.
Jeff Morris?
Yes.
Tron Enright Randolph?
Yes.
Dee Owens?
Yes.
Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Bernie Garitas?
Yes.
Okay, the vote passes six to zero.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Tammy, thank you, if you're watching this at a later date. And if you are watching this at a later date, we hope you get well soon and are able to return to work. Oh, alright, so our first item under new business tonight is, uh, S S S dash twenty-two dash ten. This is, uh, sliding scale subdivision. It is a two lot siding, sliding scale subdivision preliminary plat. Uh, located at thirteen hundred West Bell Road. Uh, it is in section eight of the Bloomington Township. And Drew Myers will be presenting tonight.
Thank you. As you stated, this is S S S dash twenty-two dash ten, the West Bell Road Sliding Scale Subdivision. It is a two lot sliding scale subdivision preliminary plat. It is currently one hundred and thirty-two point three one one acres. It's zoned agricultural rural reserve. Comprehensive plan has it designated as farm and forest. And its use is, uh, residential agriculture, agricultural and DNR classified forest. The petitioner is proposing a two lot sliding scale subdivision with one waiver request for road width. West Bell Road measures sixteen feet in width. However, chapter eight sixty-two of the Monroe County zoning ordinance for sliding scale subdivisions. Requires roads to be eighteen feet in width to pro- uh, provide the sliding scale subdivision option. Um, otherwise, the petitioner has to apply for the road width waiver. Proposed lots will be serviced by septic systems. A new septic permit was issued for proposed lot two by Monroe County Health Department. While a renewal septic permit was issued for proposed lot one. The overall intention of the sliding scale subdivision is to, uh, partition off the existing farmstead site. Uh, from the larger acreage of the property. Um, lot one will be the farmstead site containing an existing single family residence, as well as a pole barn and a detached garage. Proposed lot two will be the parent parcel remainder, uh, which will enter into a twenty-five year subdivision moratorium. Um, per the requirements of the sliding scale subdivision. I'll also note that lot two has a considerable amount of area designated as DNR floodplain, as well as DNR classified forest. Um, both of these areas are delineated on the subdivision plat and are away from any areas that would otherwise be considered buildable. Area, uh, or suitable for development. Here we have the location map. You'll see West Bell Road here on the south end of the property that's in red. And then here on the right side of the screen, we have, uh, the subdivision plat itself. Um, you'll note that all of this area here, along where my cursor is, that is all sloped area greater than fifteen percent. So it's classified as non-buildable area. And then immediately to the west, this large area that looks white is all designated DNR floodplain. A lot of the area that's in the fifteen percent or greater sloped area is DNR classified forest. This dark shaded area over here is, uh, all area that is technically buildable, um, but is currently most, mostly pasture or agricultural land. And then down here towards the south end of the property, we see proposed lot one, which is the existing farmstead site with those existing structures. That I spoke about. Here we have just a zoomed in version of the area of interest for lot number one. Um, West Bell Road measures sixteen feet in width. Um, you'll note that typically we do require right of way dedication for this, uh, portion of, uh, property that has frontage along a road. However, according to Monroe County Highway, uh, county inventory list. West Bell Road actually ends right here at the start of the property. So there was no right of way dedication required. Per the highway department's, uh, review. So, um, overall, lot number one will be two point six seven three acres and lot number two, the parent parcel. Will be a hundred and twenty-nine point six three eight acres. Here we have some pictures from the petition site. This is where West Bell Road ends and the petition site begins. And then this picture over here to the right is, uh, looking back, uh, on West Bell Road that extends all the way until its intersection at North Kinzer Pike. Some pictures of the petition site. This is the existing farmstead home, as well as the driveway that continues back to the detached garage and, uh, pole barn structure. Just some more pictures of the petition site here. I'm gonna continue to scroll through these. Alright, so that brings us to our final recommendation from the plan, planning staff. Um, we do recommend approval of this, uh, petition based on the findings that the proposed preliminary plat meets the subdivision control ordinance. Subject to the following condition, the petitioner submits a capacity letter for water and electrical services with respect to the proposed subdivision. I will note that, uh, the letter, capacity letter for water has been received by the, uh, was submitted by the petitioner. Um, and I still need to see one from the electrical services provider. So we'll still, uh, be looking to acquire that. Just to certify that, uh, electrical service can be provided for lot number two, the larger one. Um, and then we also recommend approval of the road with waiver request based on the findings of fact. And practical difficulties being met as stated in the, um, staff packet. I will now take any questions.
I, uh, yes, this, Thomas?
Um, just a quick question, a point of curiosity for me. Is it gonna be a shared driveway?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? I do have one question. Uh, if the road ends where the. Driveway begins, why is there a road width waiver required?
That's a good question. Um, so it's any road that provides access or has frontage to. Uh, the property, uh, needs to be at least eighteen feet in width for the sliding scale subdivision. Um, so since it technically does have frontage right at the end.
Okay.
That is the reason why the road has to be eighteen feet in width and hence the road with waiver.
Right, makes good sense. Thank you. Alright, if there are no further questions for staff, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone here representing this petition. Like to come forward? Okay, I don't see anybody. So I don't guess we have a presentation from petitioner tonight?
We don't see.
I would say if there's someone on a Zoom call, there's somebody with a phone number. Um, if there's someone on a Zoom call, they could raise their hand.
That's Paul Satterley's.
Oh, okay. It's good that you recognize that. I was like, I don't know who that is.
Okay, so, um, without a petitioner here. Can we really open this for public comment?
Sure.
Yes.
Can we? Okay. Alright, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this petition?
And on Zoom, if you're listening, you can raise your hand via Zoom and we will call on you to speak as well.
Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Okay, I see none. And. They had requested a waiver of final hearing. So this would be just a, could, we would vote on it then with final waiver, right? Just wanna be sure. So do we have, uh, motion to be made, including the waiver of final hearing?
I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, in the matter of petition, S S S dash two-two dash one zero. Bell Road Sliding Scale Subdivision Preliminary Plat, including the road width waiver request and the waiver. The final hearing we court request, I move that we. Approve the sliding scale subdivision with those waiver requests. Based on the findings of fact and staff reports with the following condition. That the petitioner submits a capacity letter for water and electrical services with respect to the proposed subdivision.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second before the board. Uh, Jackie, if you would, please call Earl.
This is on petition, S S S dash twenty-two dash ten, the Bell Road Sliding Scale Preliminary Plat with a road width waiver. And waiver of final hearing, as well as the condition as shown in the staff report that the petitioner submits a capacity letter for water. And electrical services with respect to the proposed subdivision. A vote in favor is a vote to approve the subdivision. Jeff Morris?
Yes.
Tron Enright Randolph?
Yes.
Dee Owens?
Yes.
Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Bernie Garitas?
Yes.
Jerry Pittsburgh?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Alright, and the good boys have a home. Alright, that brings us to our second item under new business. This is. Case number R E Z dash twenty-two dash eight. Starts rezoned from ag rural reserve to limited business. This is, uh. One of seventeen point two nine plus or minus acre parcel in Clear Creek Township section. Eleven at seventy-nine fifty-five South Fairfax Road. Presenting will be Ann Crisilius.
Thank you. Okay. So the seventeen acre property is located here, Fairfax Road. Um, so the just quick location map to give you an understanding. So this is located within the, um. It's actually located in the environmental constraints overlay area one, area two, and area three. So the property is currently zoned agricultural rural reserve. Um, there are some adjacent properties that are. Some ex-owned pre-existing business, the properties directly to the south are actually zoned. Um, happen rezoned to agricultural rural reserve. Um, and that was a, a map error. So that has been corrected. Um, so all adjacent properties are agricultural rural reserve. So I don't expect anybody to read this big block of text, but, um. So the agricultural world, um, reserve district, so here are the, um, definitions. So this, this ultimate reason request is to. Um, rezone to the limited business district. And I did wanna include the, um, character statements of each district. Um, so agricultural rural reserve, um, is generally or primarily intended for agricultural uses. Um, in addition to single family residential uses with low density rural, non-farm, uh, farm-related, single family uses. And is generally not in major subdivisions. Um, the limited business district is primarily intended to meet essential business needs. And convenience of neighboring residents. Um, limited business uses should be placed into cohesive groupings rather than individual properties along highways. And access controls should be emphasized. I'm not gonna read this whole definition, just kind of key points. Um. It does include a statement here that its purpose is to, um. Encourage about development of groups of non-residential uses that share common highway access, provide interior cross-access. To discourage single family residential uses, to protect environmentally sensitive areas such as floodplain cars and steep slopes. And to maintain the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, the number of uses permitted in the LB District is limited and some uses are only conditionally permitted. It also includes that some conditions are placed on these uses to ensure compatibility with adjacent residential uses. So this is a pictometry photo and I have a couple of these just to kind of give a sense. So the property is is long and narrow, so seventeen acres. The majority of the buildable area is going to be on the western side of the property. So closer towards the road, the steep slopes are going to increase as you get closer into that drainage area and the eco areas of Lake Monroe. So here's just another view looking north. So staff to do a site visit and take a few staff photos. We did not go back into the steep sloped area. So just these general photos are going to be the buildable area that's would be available for construction. So this area, the property would be zoned is zoned eco area three, which would have a slope restriction on slopes that are eighteen percent or less. Development could only be on slopes eighteen percent or less. The slopes would be protected beyond that steepness. I'm going to have a site map here that will show that buildable area. So this is looking north on Fairfax Road. The driveway is is not necessarily evident. It's an old driveway of the property. This it's currently vacant. There is one accessory residential structure on the property, very old garage. The property did contain a what has been described as a log cabin that has been since been removed. This is looking south along Fairfax Road. Okay, so here's that illustration of site conditions of the property. So we can see those steep slopes really begin towards the east portion of the property. So with frontage along South Fairfax Road, it is a major collector per the two thousand sixteen thoroughfare plan. The property is, you know, fairly narrow. It's about two hundred and seventy feet approximately in width. The project manager for the Highway Department has denied the existing entrance for the property for as we asked them to review this, you know, as a possible commercial driveway entrance, you know, is site distance safe? Could it be appropriate? So the existing driveway entrance was denied, but there is room. There is a location that could potentially be approved and would meet site distance standards. So they are working on getting that final approval. I believe the petitioner is just working on an updated map, but the project manager has identified that that safe location. So the comprehensive plan designates this area as rural residential. This is consistent with most of the area in this property, that most of the properties in this area. So rural residential is to preserve the rural lifestyle and opportunity of the area and help protect vulnerable lands. It does include that open space can serve a variety of uses, including recreational opportunities for local residents, limited accessory or cultural uses and buffering of adjoining uses. So on the screen, I just have a quick shot of the petitioner's letter to the Plan Commission. Their intention for this rezone, they are related to the property owners. They are also a real estate broker. They have several individuals that are interested in purchasing this land, specifically those individuals want to pursue a boat storage use. The boat storage use is permitted in the limited business zone. Staff is recommending a forwarding and negative recommendation to the county commissioners for this rezone request from Agricultural Rural Reserve to limited business based on the findings of fact and subject to Monroe County Highway and Drainage Engineer Reports.
Any questions for staff from the council? Okay. Thank you. Do we have a petitioner here to speak on this? If you would please come forward. State your name for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Lorraine Fowler. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am the daughter of the late owners of seven nine five five South Fairfax Road, Arthur and Mary Starts, who passed away in two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty one. I'm sharing on behalf of the Starts Trust with my eldest brother and tax attorney Greg Starts as trustee, giving me permission to do so. I also happen to be the youngest heir in the estate and a Realtor who has the property currently listed for sale. A little bit of the background here. My parents bought the property in two thousand seven. At the time of the purchase, there was a log cabin on the home that basically needed to come down as it was riddled with termites. My husband, who owns Fowler Tree Services and his work crew, excuse me, dismantled the home on site and donated the the good logs. Currently, what remains on the property is a simple garage. But because there was a home on the property and on the premises at one time, septic and utilities are all there and have been there since nineteen eighty three. My parents, specifically my mother, had always been a visionary person. She bought the land with her inheritance money she received from her parents with someday that being used for good. But honestly, with no specific idea in mind, some of the ideas that she had thought of was a tree farm, a small log cabins for cancer patients, foster care for individuals needing support, a plant nursery, a bed and breakfast, so on and so forth. Every plan that she thought of was coming from a place of leaving the property in better condition with which she found it. But unfortunately, time and energy ran out and mom was not able to implement any of those visionary plans. So here we stand today. The owners have passed and the land now belongs to the trust with myself and my three older brothers being the heirs to that trust. The land is a last asset for us to resolve prior to settling the estate. That said, we're in no rush to settle the estate. Like I mentioned, I'm a Realtor who has the property currently for sale. I work at RE/MAX Acclaimed Properties, the number one producing real estate company in Bloomington for twelve years and counting. I've been in business for just over fifteen years. I'm a member of the Indiana Association of Realtors, top fifty in production, as well as being a RE/MAX Platinum Award winner and a recipient of the RE/MAX Hall of Fame Award. I share these accolades, excuse me, only to communicate the working knowledge of the local Bloomington real estate market as well as understanding the business reality that supply and demand drive market value. I listed the property in the middle of the summer at four forty nine nine hundred. I received a full price offer. But I also had other individuals interested in the property. So I had three parties interested in the property all at the same time. They each wanted the property for basically the same concept, which was boat storage. The market has spoken and it's saying the highest and best use of the property is for boat storage. But not only storage, boat storage, excuse me, enclosed boat storage. And in looking at the boat storage current options in Monroe County, I see none of them have boat storage that has been proposed by the current buyers interested in this property. And I'd like to show the slides, please, this time. This shows the current, here's the property right here. And here is the road front. That's the road frontage that leads down to the four winds. The current boat storage options that we have in Monroe County at this time, although they're acceptable, they're nice businesses, they do not have enclosed storage. So if we can just see a few of those pictures and you see, these are the facilities that now have boat storage. You can have your boats shrink wrapped or for outside storage. That is not what these two buyers are proposing. And we can go to the next one. These are the various options that are currently available. And the next, please. Now, this is what the buyers of the property are proposing, specifically an enclosed structure that is neat and organized and serves a purpose for the county. So on Thursday, November tenth two thousand twenty two, I attended a business outlook panel and lunch hosted by the Bloomington Rotary and the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce with a focus on the economic forecast for two thousand twenty three. Specialists in the field of economics nationally at a state level and at a local level all spoke. And the takeaway from Clark Greener, the Business Development Director of Bloomington Economic Develop Corporation, was this. Bloomington is doing an incredible job of bringing in talent. IU's enrollments numbers are up in two thousand twenty two, well over our two thousand twenty one enrollment, and in two thousand twenty three is expected to look even better. So IU is doing their part to bring in wealth and talent to the and talent to the area. So the question lies is this, how do we retain that wealth being kept in our community? We do it through employment, resources, recreations, and amenities. Lake Monroe is used by boat enthusiasts all over the state in the state of Indiana. However, our coveted lake shoreline does not allow for private docks or storage. And any boat owner knows easy access to and from the lake is a big consideration when purchasing a boat or deciding to keep one for recreation purposes. The buyer's proposed idea allows for out of town boat owners to enjoy Lake Monroe, store their boat locally, thus bringing in more wealth and financial strength into our community and economy. A win-win for Bloomington and Monroe County. And we feel the boat storage concept in this particular location is an incredible ideal because of the road frontage, frontage and the easy access to the lake. It's on the way to the four winds and there are other businesses nearby. A boat storage use acceptance brings in the highest dollar for the property, meets a need for the community, and I would think would be appealing to the neighbors because everything intended is to be done well, well in an order, and most importantly, enclosed. Not to mention boat storage is only going to be basically conducting business three to four months out of the year. To implement the proposed use, however, we need the property to be rezoned for limited business use. If allowed to be rezoned, boat storage of any of the other ideas my mom had could become a reality if this doesn't work. But if this is not agreed upon and seen as mutually beneficial by all, because I know that's what my parents would want, we will sell the land or keep it in its current zoning state. Thank you so much for allowing me to to share. And thanks for enduring my nerves and doing it. Thank you.
You did fine. You still had seven minutes almost remaining.
There might be a few questions.
You may want to stay up here for questions, yes. And do we have any questions on the side? Any questions up here? Alright, thank you. You may go sit down now. If your step count was short twenty steps, you're back in business. Alright, do we have anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Do we have any? If you would, please come to the microphone. Identify yourself and sign in, please. You have three minutes for your comments.
Okay. Ronnie Hanson, on the property that is south of her, I have a business back behind my home. And probably impacts myself and and Brad, which is in the audience too, more than anyone else and a few across the road there. The first thing I want to say is I'm a I'm a pro property owner person, which means I I I don't really have any say so on what somebody wants to do on property that I don't own. Which but the only concerns I have was she covered in her presentation. If it's all enclosed, that's a good thing. And I I I want to speak in favor of that. And all the neighbors around me probably have the same concerns about does it devalue our property or make it worth more? I think a business that's approached the way that this is going to be approached would be an asset. And I also have concerns about the environmental impact on the in the watershed area. By this being a business such as it is, there probably won't be very many restroom facilities. If there are any, it would be very minimal on the subject. And yeah, I I just think it would it would be favorable in the in the watershed area. And I didn't know whether to get up first to be pro or I I do have some concerns about the the appearance of it. But as long as it's enclosed and I'm sure Monroe County would encourage some softening of the edges of these buildings with some landscape and stuff. Is that?
Yeah, there there would be some landscape requirements and buffering requirements if the zoning were to be changed to limited business. Yes, sir.
Yeah. And that's all that I have, I guess.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? If you would, please come on up and you can make a line. If you if you would make a line, that'll save us time walking back and forth. So if someone else wants to speak, if you would come up, please state your name and sign in.
My name is Mel Hinshaw. I'm here with my wife Nancy and we own the property almost directly across the street from the proposed property that we're talking about. I've got two, well, one's a question and one's a concern. One of them is traffic. During the summer months, the the traffic increase is just enormous because of the boats and trailers and and activity going back and forth because of the because of the amount of activity at the lake, along with maybe sometimes three ambulance runs a day coming up through there. And the driveway that's proposed, and I we I talked to the gentleman and when he came out to survey that to figure out a spot for the driveway is almost directly across from our driveway and our neighbor. And so now you're going to have, if it's boat storage, you're going to have RVs, you have all kinds going in and out of that driveway along with traffic coming both directions during the summer months, which is already dangerous to the point where during the summer, my wife won't even go out to get the mail. So that's a that's a concern. But one of my concerns is is this is being proposed for boat storage. And I know they're talking about it being enclosed and so forth, which I would be less objectionable to. But let's say you approve this zoning change for boat storage. Property gets bought, the developer decides, you know what, I don't think I want to build these buildings. I'm going to do outside storage. How can we prevent that? And I I'd ask you that question. Is there a way to prevent? If it can it be a conditional approval whereby they have upfront specific goals that they have to meet? Anybody?
Yeah, I believe it would be a conditional approval, but also what we would what this body would do is forward a recommendation to the county commissioners who have final say on changing and zoning.
Right. What what guarantee do we have that if it's if it becomes limited business that down the road, it doesn't become something else?
There is no guarantee.
Okay. Because economically, if you look at the price of the land and look at the what what boat storage goes for and the fact that we already have boat storage areas in that area that aren't that aren't full and some of our neighbors have more specific information on that. It seems unlikely that there's a good return on investment, which makes me very doubtful that it ever would become boat storage. It just doesn't make sense when you look at the cost of the land to start with. So.
Okay, thank you. Did you sign in?
No.
If you would, please do that before stepping away. Thank you, Jackie, for resetting the time. Thank you, Jackie, for resetting the time. If you would, please state your name and sign the register.
Uh, Faren Burns. I am directly across the street from that property. And. If it's going to be boat storage and enclosed. I wouldn't have a whole lot of objection to it. But there's no guarantee that's what it's going to be if you guys make it limited business. There's a whole possibility of things that could go in there once that can of worms is open. And that's not what. Necessarily we want. You know, it could, it could be a good thing. It could be a bad thing. I, I don't know, but, but if you open that can of worms to make it limited business. Then it's got a whole possibility of things it could be. And, and I don't think boat storage is a feasible. Thing for just because of cost to put the buildings in and everything. I don't, I don't believe you're gonna. My cousin owns Fairfax Marine. He's does inside boat storage. I know. What you, what you're into on that. He's not quite full yet. I mean, he's, summertime he is, wintertime right now he's not. So, you know, there's inside storage available right in the area. So I, I just can't see. That, you know. You're going to put up, put in a facility that's gonna house. Three, four hundred boats or more and make it profitable. I don't see how it can happen. And I think what it's all about is getting a limited business zoning so that the property is worth more. To be able to market it more expensive. That's what, that's what this is about, not boat storage. At least what I think. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would please, I know you've signed in. If you would please next come up and state your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Nancy Hinshaw. I live in the home directly across from this piece of property you're talking about. I set out in my front porch. I set out on my back deck. I garden out front. I mow more about that lot than any of you do. I sit and watch it. I open my front door every day to see the beauty. Of that piece of land and I know it goes back to the lake. I see a beautiful house setting on that piece of property if people could only afford it. What you're going to be putting up is going to be an eyesore and I have to live with it. So no, thank you. And I know the traffic on that road. Like my husband said, I can't even cross that road to get the mail during the day. I have to wait till dark. So I can watch this way, so I can watch that way. If I watch this way coming from the lake. Motorcycles, boats, cars. Semis, everything comes barreling down that road at probably sixty miles an hour. I think it's a forty-five. But I can't even get out and I stop and I listen and I say, oh my God, what was that? It went by so fast. I couldn't even tell what it was. I couldn't tell if it was a motorcycle. I couldn't tell if it was some four wheel truck jacked up. They do not go slow on that road, believe me. And it's put another driveway where they're maybe going to plan on putting it, comes right up to us. And there again, we're going to have more. It's all pretty in the beginning when you build a new building there, but if you stop and look. At where they put boats and then the boats fall apart. Nobody comes back for them. Nobody comes back for the RV and it's just going to be left there to crumble. And that's going to rent that beautiful piece of land across the street from me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you would, please go ahead and bring the registry when you come back up. Yeah, if you want to bring that with you, put back on the podium. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, hello, my name's Brad Bloom. I got the, I own the property just north of there, which is the Bloom family limited partnership. I've been there since nineteen eighty-seven. I, I like her mom's idea, what she said she wanted to do with the property. None of it included boat storage. That's actually completely opposite of some of her ideas. It sounded like. But I've taken that land down there and I've got some commercial property that's going to rezonate thing, but um. No one knows we're there. I've taken the front acreage and I've let the trees grow back and we prune them back and we've let, we've gone back to exactly what the county wanted. And rural residential on that site is, we've made it so you don't know we're back there. We, we've let the dogwoods grow. We've let the walnuts grow. We let the maples grow. We're pruning it. And now I bought a tractor and we're trying to make it a nice grove. Goes totally against the neighborhood, rural agricultural with people that want to have their house in a residential area to bring a commercial business in there. There's no site plan. Which, so you don't know, you don't know how much of the land that they want to use for boat storage. They said they want to use high end boat storage up front. And it's all the economic benefits to Bloomington. Well, the problem is, and Bloomington very well knows this, is that. The Four Winds is running out of parking places. I'm a boater, been a boater since nineteen eighty-seven on boats and wave runners. They close the Four Winds down at times because there's no place to park a boat down there. There's more trailers. High end boats, you can't go to the launching ramp down at the lake, that the dam, because there's no room to turn those boats around. People won't go to Morse Creek because they're not going to drive the back roads to go there. There's, there's businesses for sale down there right now for boat storage. Larry Polly has his business for sale and has thirty-two thousand square foot under roof. That's businesses for sale. It's ironic that. People all of a sudden want to do boat storage, but yet. It's very, very expensive piece of land for boat storage down there. Another problem that that may arise that I don't, they don't know about the property, but I know this property well and, you know, and the ins and outs of it, been there for eighty-seven, mushroom hunter, rabbit hunter, deer hunter on the property. And we talked to the historical society, but part of the old Salem Road goes through this property. And it cuts the property in half and it also ties back up, goes across by property down Rudy, Rudy Castro's property, which goes down to the Decker Tomb. So a lot of people didn't know was in that area. But there's a, there's a tomb down there and no quarry and also a civil war, revolutionary soldier has been buried along Fairfax there. But part of Old Salem Road goes right through the property and I don't know what, you know, what Monroe County does, but as part of some of the last history of Salem Road goes through that property, which would have to be torn up to use the backside of the property. So if they're going to do a, you know, a site plan and do valuation, I'm sure that's going to come up on that, which has not been discussed. The. The, the, you know, obviously some of the neighbors don't want it. One concern I was, would have if it's going to be for high end boats is the pulling in and out of Fairfax. I talked to the highway guy and I said, you said you're going to make recommendations here, but just based on forty miles an hour. I said, the problem is most people drive up and down Fairfax about sixty miles an hour. And he says he's aware of that, but there's no, you know, there's no formula that they can change on that. Another problem we have, we talk about ambulances, but when I mow across the front. Drinking and driving is heavy. I'm amazed. That I don't get off my mower. I've got to pick up how many beer bottles? How many whiskey bottles? How many small tequila bottles? How many Fireball bottles I pick up along Fairfax there? You don't have normal people driving up down that road. You have a lot. I mean, I'm amazed. I mean, I, 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 I got a hundred, two hundred feet and I'm picking up five or six different bottles. A week. I think Fairfax is four miles long. What's going on out there? You see a lot. Okay, I'm sorry.
Your time's up.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, there do not appear to be any others who wish to speak on this petition. There is a request for waiver, waiver of final hearing. So if we add a motion that includes that waiver, we could entertain that motion. Otherwise, this will carry on to our next meeting, correct?
I think there's one opportunity for the petitioner or the representative to give.
Oh, for the remonstrance, yes, okay. So if the petitioner would like to come back, I haven't shared these meetings for a while. You would have five minutes to respond to the. The public comment.
So first of all, I'm really thankful that a lot of neighbors did come out. And to the question, as far as do we have a surveyor with a site plan? No, we don't. Because right now I have two buyers, a potential third. That are just trying to get the idea and they're all saying boat storage. Honestly, myself and our family, we're okay either way, if it gets rezoned or not. We're just seeing a need. That's coming. The market has spoken and the market's saying I have two buyers that want it for that purpose. Now, whether Bloomington has the market for that or not, that's yet to be proven. I've just got two people that want it. So I'm just trying to do right by the estate. I'm trying to do right by my family and I'm trying to do right by the neighbors too. I do appreciate hearing the, and I think those things should be seriously considered. And we're okay to hang on to the property if we have to. I'm just looking for an open or a closed door. That is best for the community. That includes Monroe County, but it also includes our neighbors. So, because you may potentially be my neighbors. So, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You would staff there. We do have one petition or one question after the remonstrance there.
Just a question and some of the neighbors hit on it. So that the, apparently the market's demanding boat storage.
But yes, correct.
So my question to you is, in. Your field of expertise with your, with your potential buyers and people have offers on the table. Is it a lack of boat storage that, that you're seeing or do you, or is it your impression? And maybe this is something you can talk about at the next meeting. Is your impression that. They're wanting to relocate from one, one boat storage location.
Right.
To one that's enclosed or something that's unique about this product that they like?
Well, both buyers are out of Indianapolis and have proven this concept up in Indianapolis. And they're the ones that see the need in Bloomington. I'm not talking about additional boat storage in Monroe County. I'm talking about enclosed boat storage. So, you know, I'm in a situation where I have two people that want it. We're trying to wrap up the estate. This is the last thing. So I thought, you know, instead of, we didn't want to tie it up with one person tying it up for six months and then, you know, it not work out or whatever. So I said, I'm just going to go through this process and keep marketing. If I have someone that wants to buy it and build a beautiful home, I'm all for that. That's great. And that's still maybe where that lands. That's fine. I just am trying to use the highest and best use of the property.
Okay.
So, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it did.
Okay.
Thank you. And then we have a question for staff after the fact here.
So on, Anne, or is it Anne, you've got this petition right, excuse me, yeah. So on the aerial map. Let me back up. What is the pre-existing business use immediately to the south that the gentleman? Owns? What is that? What is that pre-existing business? And maybe he can, he can help.
Are you talking about immediately south or the one that's boat storage?
No, the one that's immediately south.
Yes, that one was recently rezoned to Agar in the front portion and that's actually one of the remonstrators that spoke.
And what is that you, what's the pre-existing business use that's on that property?
So the pre-existing business use, I believe, was a landscaping business. Okay.
Okay. And then further south, that's, that's the campground.
Yes.
Okay, okay. On the aerial where the gentleman's property is to the south, where we've got the, the pink pre-existing business. Can you give me an idea? Where the east boundary is of that pre-existing business relative to? The photo, is it to the second tree line? Yeah, right there. Does it go that far? Roughly, is that approximately where the east line of those parcels go?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, just to clarify, there's no longer a pre-existing business use on that property we were just talking about.
The one that Anne has highlighted?
The one that Mr. Garitas was talking about.
The one directly to the south, there's two parcels. One was rezoned to Agar and the other maintains the pre-existing business zone. Yes.
And the east parcel maintains the pre-existing business, correct? The furthest to the east.
The furthest to the east, I believe that's.
Let me read, let me just ask that again. So which of the two parcels south of? South of this subject tract. Holds the pre-existing business?
The one in the middle. The one, the lot to the, I can share my screen, Anne, if you wouldn't mind.
The one closest to the road or furthest from the road?
This central lot here. Is where the landscaping business.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. As I previously mentioned, this does have a waiver of final hearing requested, so we could entertain. A motion if the motion were to include that waiver. Do I have such a motion? There appears to be no such motion, so this will carry on to the next regular meeting of the Plan Commission.
I think there could be a vote in either support or.
Yeah.
Against it, so.
I thought since it had to have another hearing that it just automatically carry on.
It does if you have a failed motion, but I think that there are some Plan Commission members maybe that would be willing to vote one way or another and, yeah.
Okay, but we didn't, I, I didn't get a motion, so I didn't know where we were going with this.
Okay.
Really have a lot of time, but.
I, I did have a question. I know that we discussed kind of some rules and procedure at the last admin. I wasn't here, but I, I still. Have a question. Regarding. I guess line of sight. I was just kind of doing some rough looking and at the. Most northern part of that and till you get to like that curve on Fairfax, that's about four hundred and fifty plus feet. And then on the southern part of that, it's only a hundred and like ninety-seven, so plus to two hundred feet. I'm, so my question, and I saw that Paul's phone number is here. It, it, if he wanted to address that, I know that the speed limit kind of is baked into your analysis of line of sight, but. I think with trailers, boats and all of that being, you know, considered with the potential use. I, I would be very curious for him to weigh in.
Paul, do you have anything to say? Also, Jackie, we have a comment or something in the chat, but I don't know what it is.
Yes, it was Lisa Ridge. She's a panelist now.
Okay, thank you. All right, Paul, did you have any response to Tron's raised concern?
And tech services is going to allow that phone number to speak.
Okay, Paul, can you, if you would unmute yourself, did you have a response?
Uh, Tron, could you repeat that again?
I know you've, it sounds like you've had discussion, but. And I know the speed limit is baked into some of this analysis, but. We're nearing a curve kind of as you travel south on Fairfax. And from the most northern part of this parcel, it's about four hundred and fifty. And from the southern part of this parcel, it's about two hundred feet. But with the proposed use of enclosed boat storage and hauling the boats in and using kind of large. Rigs even maybe, who knows, they might bring in a flatbed to move a boat. Do you have any comments of safety concerns? And I think this might, I'm not sure if we'll continue this or not, but. If you feel like you need a little time to really look at that, that's fine, but if, if you have any initial comments, that would be great.
Oh, sorry, could. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, I know Ben took a look at the. Parcel and the drive, the proposed driveway locations and made a recommendation. And the. Drive, his recommended locations based on, you know, the forty mile an hour speed limit. And the site distances available according to, and. It references our, our design standards as well, but it. It takes in, you know, many that considers many types of vehicles. You know, cars, trucks and so forth, so it doesn't just do automobiles, but it. Considers, you know, wide range of vehicles that would have to. Maneuver out that driveway safely to get onto Fairfax.
Hey. Thank you, Paul. If, if you have further concerns to taking a second look at this. We may have an opportunity to hear this petition again. So now I would come back to the.
I'm willing to make a motion, Mr. Pittsford.
Okay, go ahead.
In the case of REZ dash twenty-two dash eight Stars Living Trust, I move that we forward a negative recommendation for the rezon request from Agricultural Rural Reserve. To limited business.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to send a negative recommendation to the county commissioners for REZ dash twenty-two dash eight. A vote in favor is a vote to send a negative recommendation to the commissioners for the rezon from Agar to LB. Tron and Wright Randolph?
Yes.
Dee Owens?
Yes.
Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Bernie Garitas?
No.
Jerry Pittsford?
To be clear, this does not include a a motion for waiver of the final hearing, correct?
Um, would that include a waiver of final hearing?
I guess my assumption was if it was a negative recommendation, then this would be the end. So yes.
Okay, friendly amendment of those that have voted, this is your final. Okay. I think that's fair to assume, yes.
Yeah, and I accept the friendly amendment as the second or.
Yep.
Okay, no.
No, okay, uh Jeff Morse?
Yes.
Okay, the motion does fail four to two. So this will go forward to.
I'll I'll go for another motion.
May I say something? I've been waiting to say something. We we haven't had a chance. I've heard questions and commentary. My concern here is that as as the neighbors pointed out very astutely is that. Uh, I don't, line of sight doesn't matter to me because. Um, changing this to limited business opens the door for a large number of business opportunities. That I don't think anybody in that neighborhood wants, whether it's conditional or permitted. And so I think looking at that list is very important uh for folks to understand that. So I wanted to point that out before we have another vote. Thank you.
We have another motion.
I agree with Commissioner Thomas that evaluating the use table um and even. I think some other conversations are great. I don't know if we want to have them at this last moment, but I'm curious why didn't that conditional use be um. Uh, saw if it's only meant for boat storage. Um, so.
I I think we're starting to rehear this petition.
Right, so.
And and I don't want to.
I'm not, I'm not going to make a motion.
There's a provision for it to be reheard on secondary. So if there are, if there are concerns that weren't raised here now, uh, motion failed, we can hear it again at the next meeting, correct?
That is correct.
Next regular meeting.
Yes.
So and if there are items that staff would like to address, they can be put on the administrative meeting for uh the next administrative meeting.
Yes.
Cause this will be heard of the next regular meeting of the playing commission.
Correct.
Thank you. Moving on to our final agenda item for tonight. We have uh. SSS dash twenty-two dash five. This is the Betty Chambers Sliding Scale Subdivision Preliminary Plat. This includes a road width waiver. And a preliminary hearing. Waiver of final hearing requested. It is one parcel of eleven point eight plus or minus acres in section four Bean Blossom Township. And presenting tonight is Mr. Brown.
Thank you. So the petitioner is proposing a two lot sliding scale subdivision with a road width waiver, as has been explained. Subject permit applications have been submitted for proposed lot one and the existing lot two. Uh, and have been issued, but the perm, but the actual. Sorry, the actual subjects have not been installed yet as far as I know. Uh, right of way permits are pending the outcome of the subdivision petition. Each of the proposed lots is accessed via Wampler Road. Here is a slope map showing the slopage of the lot. As you can see, it is fairly flat. Uh, I believe that there, let's see.
We're not seeing the slope map.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have to share.
Okay, I think I may have accidentally turned that off. I apologize for that. No way. All right. Here is the slope map. I apologize for that. As you can see, the north lot, that is the proposed new lots is fairly flat. Here are some images of the site itself. Uh, roughly where these plants begin is about where the new line is being proposed. Here are the details of the lots themselves. Both will be accessed by Wampler Road. There are a few, a little bit of steep slopage on both lots, but I think those are can ea- easily be circumvented. The existing structures on lot two, which is the barren parcel, include a residence, a detached pole barn and a freestanding canopy. Here is the lot itself. And the subdivision plan proposed by Eric Deckard. And here is something I actually did forget to include with the packet. I apologize for that. It is the facts of finding from the petitioner themselves. I have printed off several copies for your review. The staff recommends an approval based on the finding of the proposed preliminary plat meets the subdivision control ordinance. We also recommend approval for the road width waiver based on findings of fact. This petition was given a positive recommendation by a vote of two to zero at the Monroe County Plaid Committee meeting on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. I'm sorry, I want to mention what the road width is. It is currently fifteen feet. As you know, in the county ordinance, there is a standard. Uh, requesting roads be at least eighteen feet. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do we have uh questions for staff at this time? Yes.
Um. Are these? Acreage amounts correctly listed because there's, is the percentage correct? For parent parcel versus the new parcel? I'm assuming the second number is buildable.
Yes, that is the total buildable area. And the first number is the total acreage of both proposed lots.
Fifty-five percent of eleven point eight acres.
It's just, it's just added, isn't it? Yeah.
It's barely there.
I key, I always keep in my mind that it's like sixty percent and I know that's wrong, but I. I always have to pause and.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? I do not see a representative for petitioner here. Is there one in the zoom, Jackie?
There is.
Okay, there we go. Now I can see. Uh, Mr. Deckard, you're representing the petition. If you would, please go.
Yes, hi, thank you everybody for showing up here tonight and uh and entertaining this this petition. I've got no further questions. On my end of things here, but if you have any questions here with regards to the plat, be glad to answer any questions and we agree with the. With the recommendations of the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard. If there's nothing else from you, I'm going to ask if any of the plant commissioners have questions for you to stand by. Does anyone have questions?
I have a question for highway, but I don't know if it's Mr. Satterley or Ms. Ridge. Um, so it looks like one driveway is coming off of. North Amos Lane and then the other drive is is going to come off of Wampler, so. Uh, so you obviously looked at both of those in terms of the road width waiver request. We did. Okay. Thank you, just verifying.
Any questions for petitioners representative down here? Are we good down there?
Uh, yeah, I was just saying during the plat committee, we uh drilled into that uh comment and questioned that Commissioner Thomas was asking.
Okay, gotcha. All right. So no further questions? Okay, we will open this to public comment. There is no one present in the room to speak on this. Is there anyone in Zoom? Please raise your hand.
Speak in favor?
To speak in favor?
I don't see anyone.
Is there anyone to speak against this petition?
I don't see anyone and anyone on Zoom can um raise their hand on the Zoom screen, um, which is, should be at the bottom of your screen. I don't see anyone.
Okay.
Oh, I do see.
There we go, Betty Chambers. Betty, if you would, uh, you may go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, did you, uh, do you have comments for us, Betty?
Oh, I was just wondering if it was passed or not, so. If it's. Like the new driveway will go off of Amos Lane.
Okay, all right, got that. So we're, if you don't have any other. Concerns, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to the playing commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I'm ready to make a motion if.
All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment phase now and bring it back to the playing commission for a motion if we have one ready.
Oh, perfect. Um, in. Uh, case number SSS dash twenty-two dash five Betty Chambers Sliding Scale Subdivision Preliminary Plat. Thank you. I uh move for approval based on the findings that the proposed preliminary plat meets the subdivision control ordinance. Uh, and approval of the road width waiver based on the facts of finding and the petition was given a positive recommendation. Uh, by two to zero at the Monroe County Plaid Committee meeting of. I don't think that last one's a condition. I just got caught up in reading what was on the screen. Uh, so that's my motion.
Waiver of final hearing?
Oh, in a waiver of final hearing, thank.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thomas, for getting that tone in there. Was that your second?
Yes, that's my second.
Okay, that way we don't have a friendly amendment. Sorry about that. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we have a motion and second for uh. The idea of moving this uh forward with a positive recommendation. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Sure, this is on SSS dash twenty-two dash five. This would be an approval of the sliding scale subdivision preliminary plat and road width waiver as well as the waiver of. Final hearing. Um, a vote in favor is a vote to approve the subdivision. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Bernie Garitas?
Yes.
Jerry Pittsford?
Yes.
Jeff Morse?
Yes.
Tron and Wright Randolph?
Yes.
Dee Owens?
Yes.
Okay, the vote passes six to zero.
All right, thank you very much. Now you've been approved, Mrs. Chambers. All right. Going to bring it back to us. Jackie, did you have any report from planning?
I do not.
David? Okay. With no reports, uh, if there's no further business, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
All right.
Thank you.